Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order a Monday, October the 8th, regular board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve the revised October 8th meeting agenda as presented?
I move that the agenda, the revised agenda of Monday, October 8th, 2018 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
President Humbles?
Aye. Got it?
Got it.
At this time, we will hold our public hearing on the instructional reporting time for the 2019-20 school year. If anyone from the audience is interested in addressing the board, please step to the podium and state your name and address for record. You will be given five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Daye will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. Laurel, have you received any correspondence regarding the instruction reporting for the 2019-20-20 school year?
I have received no correspondence.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will declare the public hearing closed at this time and act on the administration's recommendations as provided in our consent agenda. Next, Dr. Buck will now provide his superintendent's report. Following Dr. Buck's report, we will have time for any board member reports. Dr. Buck?
Yeah, awesome. Thanks, President Humbles. Online registration is now open for the 22nd Annual America Reads: Reading is Contagious Literacy Celebration. The program's designed to shine a spotlight on the importance of reading to young children to improve literacy and demonstrate the joy of reading through collective citizen involvement. In the Cedar Rapids metro area, it's become an annual fall tradition, bringing hundreds of volunteers into area schools to share a favorite book with students. America Reads 2018 will be held in our district on October 26th, and the deadline to register as a reader is October 19th. Our young learners love this opportunity to share their enthusiasm for reading with visitors. And I think I'm already signed up for two or three schools, but we'll see. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Each summer, we partner with our local public libraries to engage young learners with reading by holding a bookmark design contest. We received more than 30 entries this summer, and at the end of September, we held the annual Bookmark Design Celebration, where five students received special recognition for their bookmark designs, and all attendees were treated to animated readings by three guest readers. Congratulations to all the kindergarten through 5th grade students who entered in the contest and celebrated their love for reading with their families at the Cedar Rapids Public Library. Last week, I had the pleasure of participating once again in the annual John Cushing Relay for Life alongside our young 5th grade runners. This run is in honor of John Cushing, who was a longtime volunteer at Polk Elementary. John's passions were baseball, family, and community. The run is designed to promote strong values in our students, and I have to say, this is a highlight for me each fall. As you're likely aware, today marks the first of two days of professional learning for our staff. These valuable staff learning days are focused on professional learning communities. For instance, today at the high school level, there were three learning centers. Wash, Jeff, and Kendi hosted 12 consultants from Solution Tree, who provided learning on highly collaborative teams and assessment practices. Teams will apply their learning in their buildings tomorrow as they dive deeper into their plans for assessment and highly effective teams. Finally, by way of reminder, the inaugural schooled event is on October 10th in the Whipple Auditorium at the Cedar Rapids Public Library from 5:00 to 6:30, and features Jackson Elementary Principal Nick Duffy, Garfield Elementary 4th Grade Teacher Darcel Pledge, and Metro High School's Lunchroom Manager Kristy Borts. And the Cedar Rapids Community's Coffee is Thursday morning at Newbo Market. Community members will have an opportunity to hear from John Rice, Adam Zimmerman, and Carlos Grant on the passion-driven work around curriculum, culture, and climate, and how public school choice is alive and well through our magnet school offerings. So a couple opportunities to interact yet this week.
Thank you. Any board reports?
I have something. On Thursday, was able to attend the 2018 History Makers Gala along with Dr. Buck and Dr. Grant and Director Meisterling, and it was just a fantastic event among some other great community members who were honored was Shelby Humbles, who is Nancy's husband. He's just done a lot for awesome work for equity and inclusion in the community, and that was just a really great event to be a part of. Also Laurel Daye was there. Sorry. And attended.
Any other reports? Next, we go to communication delegations and petitions. Do we have any green slips?
We have none.
Since there are no requests to speak to the board this evening, we will move on to our consent agenda. As part of our consent agenda, do any of the board members have items that they would like to pull for separate discussion and/or voting consideration?
I do. I'd like to pull for discussion BA 19146, the Forecast Analytics 5, and the BA 19147, Kelly Services, for additional discussion.
Yeah, so David Lind, if you could individually address those, please.
Sorry, so are, do you have questions? So on the Kelly Services?
I didn't see any costs associated with that contract and wondered what that was going to cost. I understand it, and I appreciate it, and I like it. Just wanted to know how much it was going to cost.
Sure. So the cost for the Kelly Services, this is a contract recruiter that we would have as a temporary recruiter for us, is $42 an hour. So the base, it's a base wage plus a service rate that we pay.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
All right. As for Forecast 5 Analytics, this is something that I have not had experience with in the past, Forecast 5. I've sat through some demonstrations years ago, and I just recently sat through a demonstration on that. And based on what I have seen from what they have, the demonstration, and I see that there's a lot of efficiencies that we can gain from using Forecast 5 in the accounting and the reporting aspect. They've made a lot of progress since the last time I've seen it. In, for example, the budgeting component, they have actually added some details in there that allows you to drill down in your budget, all the way down to an employee basis, and projecting forward. And before, it was more like you get your wage and salary, and you just throw a percentage on it. They have developed that more so you can get down to employee level. And also, it does a great job in helping you project, not only one year out, through five years, and continually, on a monthly basis, you can kind of see and tie it out to your unspent balance. And they've made that process a lot smoother, a lot quicker. You can do the projection on a monthly basis, unspent balance, we have done that, but it's a manual process, and you're pulling and you're constantly having to update the spreadsheets constantly. This, it actually does most of it for you, and it actually gives you a lot of time that you can spend more evaluating the data and less time trying to create the data, you know? And that's, so we do a lot of hands-on in updating board reports manually, from extracting data out of our accounting system, and manually getting to the point where you can get presented to you. With Forecast 5, the plus component on a monthly basis, you can actually upload your ledger on a monthly basis, and then you're able to quickly print, hit buttons, say, print this report, and it extracted in a finished product that is, you know, will get to the board ready, or any other group that you're pulling some information for. It also will provide us a lot of exhibits, pulling a lot of the exhibits we use in our budget, a lot of exhibits we use in our CAFER. You can maintain that through Forecast 5 and helping pull that. The piece that I'm not looking at pulling together is the data comparison. There's another component you can do. I'm not looking at that because we have another area we can get that data from is through ISFIS. We can get, how we compare to other schools in the state. What Forecast 5 is looking at doing is how do you compare across states? They don't have that developed yet, but I'm more concerned how we compare and what we're doing in state anyway at this point in time, and I can get that data through another avenue. So.
Thank you. Do other school districts in the state use this software?
There is a lot of schools.
A lot of them, okay.
Yes, are using this. And I heard raving reviews from another school district, Waaki. They have been using it for a number of years, and they are, you know, great advertising actually for them. They have a lot of great reviews for them, and they're able, and they're been using it to help them. And they do the Matarius Budget Award, and they use that extensively for their documents within their budget, you know? So they have great reviews of them. And for the, you know, and ultimately, I'm hoping that that will get us a lot of efficiencies in the business office, will free us up to do other things. So.
Yep, I appreciate that, thank you.
I had a couple of questions about that. So is it a software, or is it the service too? So will there be some tech support that goes with it?
Absolutely. And they will actually help build some of the reports that we would, if we want special reporting, if we need, yep.
And just, is it three users or three devices?
Three licenses for us to be able to use, yes.
So it doesn't have to be tied to a specific person?
Correct.
And it includes all the updates and everything?
Yes.
Because with the pace that things are changing?
Yeah, yeah. They're constantly updating that, too.
Okay. So that, so it includes all of that?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a few questions as well. So you had mentioned that Waaki used it and used it successfully. Are there any examples of a larger district similar in size to what we are that uses this program or is able to?
I did not poll the UEN schools. I know Waaki attends the UEN meetings, but they're not one of the top, you know?
Well, I don't know, they'd be.
They're probably close, yeah.
They'd be 10,000 kids. They're bigger than Council Bluffs.
Okay, then, yeah. So they've been using it for a number of years, and they've been very happy with them. So.
I think they're bigger, they're nearly, they'd be about this, yeah, it'd be a push. Yeah, we could fact-check that. They'd be within a hundred kids of each other, which to me is the same.
And then I was wondering if you just had an estimate of how many man-hours are saved with this Forecast 5 as opposed to doing this manual configuration?
You know, I don't have a good feel for that right now because we've got some new people, and it does take, I think there'll be more man-hours now because it takes longer to pull some of that stuff together, getting used to the pulling the reports together, especially when you're not real familiar with access, and that's what we do a lot of it in. And so getting new people trying to pull that together, I don't, I really don't know how many man-hours will be saved at this point in time. But I know there'll be some setup, and, but, once that setup happens, I think you'll be, the monthly reporting aspect will be done in minutes versus, you know, I don't know how long each person's actually doing it, but, so, but I know it will be very quickly.
Is there a time you could come back and then share with us the savings in time?
Yeah, absolutely.
After you get it up and working and stuff, I think that would be helpful.
Nancy, the other, I just had a comment on BA 19134 that is at our table, and that's the annual appointment for board members to board committees. I just want to remind the board that years ago, we didn't have any representation on committees, ad hoc or otherwise, and so we decided to assign a board member to these if they were interested in doing that. And so just, you know, this is a community school district, these are community represented boards that advise the board, the full board, on decisions related to those particular topics. And we don't really serve as a voting member, I know everyone has read that, but just a reminder that we're really kind of there as a liaison and to clarify any questions that the committee may have or otherwise. So I just wanted to provide that brief history and comment.
And your board packet too, at least, that committee's had each one of us will be sitting on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I believe this is a roll call due to the personnel report and stipulation of the substitute teacher pay.
And do we have a motion to approve the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we have a roll call.
Thank you. Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
And President Humbles?
Aye. Next on our agenda is a presentation from McKinley Middle School, who will be highlighting their Makerspace and student news. And I will turn this meeting over to Dr. Grant for introductory comments.
Good evening, board. As always, as we continue the path to realize our vision of every learner future-ready, McKinley Middle School is in the preparation stage of transitioning to become the second magnet middle school in our system. As we know, Roosevelt Creative Court or Business Academy currently exist in that role. And in this venture of their transition, they're doing some very exciting work in their building, and they're coming to highlight part of that work today, which is creation of a lot of imagination of their very creative staff and the large vision of their current leader, Mr. Jason Martinez. So I want to introduce Mr. Martinez and let him take it from there. Thank you.
I didn't realize I was going to speak tonight. But hey, I'll take it. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce one of my probably most innovative educators in my building, my whole staff is just full of innovative individuals, but one of my greatest innovators, champions at McKinley is my teacher librarian, Amy Gardner, who has not only been a welcome addition to the McKinley staff since last year, but what she's brought to our building around innovation, literacy, and just support for students and teachers has been unbelievable. And then with Mrs. Gardner is the MCK Chief News Correspondent, 6th Grader Connor. So I'm going to turn it over to the two of them.
Good evening, Dr. Buck, Cedar Rapids Community School Board members, parents, teachers, staff, and community. I appreciate this opportunity to share some of the exciting programs going on at McKinley Middle School. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Gardner, and I'm a teacher librarian at McKinley. This is my second year at McKinley and my 12th year in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Today, I'm lucky to share with you what we are doing in our Makerspace. Eleanor Roosevelt said, "You gain strength, courage, and confidence by every experience in which you really stop to look fear in the face. You must do the thing you think you cannot do. In other words, great things can happen when you get out of your comfort zone." Keeping that in mind, these next few minutes of me standing in front of you with this information does have the potential to be awesome. The Makerspace at McKinley was funded through the generous donations from parents, PTO, staff, the community, and a grant from AFCEA. With the support, we have purchased materials for our students and added more materials as students have shown more interest in different areas. Students have a variety of ways to use the Makerspace. Students have come down in complete classes to use the materials and to participate in Makerspace challenges. Students in the special education course have an opportunity to come in weekly to use these materials. There are Makerspace lunches where students explore what they're interested in, and we have used the materials in our school's STEAM Fest and after-school. One of the projects we worked on was to help the Humane Shelter. Maker with a Cause was a lunch program that students initiated last year, and we started with donations of used T-shirts. The shirts were cut into strips and then braided into dog toys and donated to the Humane Shelter. Last year, we also borrowed then purchased programming robots that the students were really excited to use. We talked about how directions for programming these robots are algorithms or a step-by-step procedure for solving a problem or accomplishing some end. They had mats to use with the robots and had to set a start and an end. Then another student was tasked with putting roadblocks in their way, forcing the first student to adapt their original algorithm to complete the problem. Some classes meet in the library for special Makerspace challenges. The 6th grade team has brought their students in frequently to participate in these opportunities. Challenges and materials change with the seasons and what is going on. For example, during the holiday time last year, we had the opportunity to repurpose damaged books into evergreen trees. For Valentine's Day, we had cutie oranges available while students worked because all our kids are cuties. Other classes come in on a weekly basis. We are lucky to see Ms. Hollingsworth students every week. They really enjoy the different building sets we have to offer. This year, we have started a news team. We meet on Monday after-school and record the news for the upcoming week. The McKinley news team writes up the script for how they will share the news events for that week and then perform as anchor for the recording. We also have a producer who films and edits the segments. The students are really excited about showing holidays, so that has been part of our program. They do the research for what holidays to share and work together to decide what backgrounds are included in the news segment. We use an iPad and iMovie and Do Ink as apps to create our news segments. We have shared the video with our teachers and on our YouTube channel for them to share with their students. We look forward to working with the local news station, KCRG, and will have them as guest visitors from their station later this month, as well as planning to take the students into their news station later this year. All these opportunities and more have been student-directed by their interests and their needs. As we continue to apply for grants, we will continue to keep that as our guiding force. As teachers, we try to support our students with getting out of their comfort zone in a safe and supported way, and we have lots of opportunities to do that in our Makerspace. Thank you for taking the time to hear about our Makerspace at McKinley. As I stated earlier, great things can happen when you get out of your comfort zone. Please feel free to visit, and we would be happy to share the exciting activities we are doing. And I was told there would be questions, so both Connor and I are happy to answer any questions.
How many students are participating?
Right now, in the news program, we have four, but more have signed up because of seeing the program, but we film on Mondays, and there wasn't school today.
Connor, what do you like about your role in what you're doing?
I am anchor, and I like my role because I like to talk, and I feel that it's like very, I like it because it's fun talking in front of a camera and then knowing that people are going to see it.
You write your own stories.
Well, I get the weekly schedule, so like I get the schedule of like everything that's going to be there in the week. And I notice that if I write a script, I just sound super boring. So I'm just like, and today we have, so I just go off of, I just look at it, and I decide what I'm going to say.
So you kind of ad lib?
Yeah.
Very nice. Like that. So how much time in your day does it take? You film on Mondays? How long does that take?
Yeah, it probably takes close to like 20 minutes because sometimes we have to do retakes. The first time we actually filmed, it was like cut off short to like 30 minutes, so, and we had to take retakes, so I guess we could like film just like a perfect video in 10 minutes, but with retakes, it takes longer.
Are you pretty popular now at McKinley?
Well, I wouldn't say popular, but I have been getting more attention.
So you are popular.
Yeah.
Are there opportunities to have our local newscasters and stuff come in?
I've already talked to KCRG, one of the school parents works there, so she's coming in, and she's going to help me arrange some different opportunities for us.
Wow, is that, does that, does that sound exciting for you, Connor?
Yeah, I think it's very exciting.
It's very exciting.
So do you do this all year long?
We will, we will be doing this all year long. We just started, so we're looking forward to getting it even bigger and better.
Yeah.
And can you just share with us some of your topics? Maybe your favorite topics.
Definitely our most recent one, which was the magazine sale. We had a magazine sale at McKinley, and so I was like, kind of like forceful, and I'm like, sell those magazines.
I bought a lot of them.
We've also talked about doing a video for when there's a snow day that we can send out, do it ahead of time, and, you know, with the snow in the background.
Yeah.
So I have a question for you. So as a student, you're interested in it, it's something you like to do, you like being in front of the camera. So what, what other skills or strengths do you think it helps you to develop? Like, how does it make you a better student in class, or just a better person, and maybe more aware in the community? What does it do to make you a better person or a better student?
Well, I definitely think it helps you come out of your shell. Like, sometimes kids are nervous to raise their hand in class and answer questions, where if you do this and know that people are going to watch it, then it's kind of like, well, it's a done deal. You'll just get better at talking to people, in front of people, just talking in general.
Awesome, I agree. I can see it right here, so.
Yeah.
Mrs. Gardner, I have a question for you. As Johnson is currently a STEAM Academy and feeds into McKinley, do you do any work with them to make sure that there's alignment or so that there's continuation of programs that are already existing at Johnson?
We are planning to do that. I've worked with Stacy in the past, she's the teacher librarian there. Last year, one of our things we did through the library is we went and visited and had our students read stories to their students, and then the stories they read, the kids got to keep. So we are trying to keep that connection going.
So Connor, this meeting is taped, and so you can watch it later in the week.
All right. Yeah, give us your very best on-air voice to say.
See, and I'll tell you one other thing. So Director Borcheting brought it up with alignment with Ken, or I'm sorry, with Johnson STEAM Academy. I know for a fact, because I have kids that do journalism and do some other things at Washington High School, that I know Principal Klein there is doing some of the same stuff in the mornings with students, so, you know, from McKinley, you'll still have the same opportunity if you're still interested to even develop it further, even in Wash, so that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Every learner. Hey Connor, I do this, I do this thing on Fridays called Buck Stops, and I added students and a teacher last year, or last week, and the hits went from, I don't know, 300 to like 3,000. So I don't, you know, I could fairly quickly figure things out, I think. So next time I'm at McKinley, would you be willing to be in the Buck Stops video? I'll, I'll do a little intro, I'll coach you ahead of the video, and then I'll throw it to you, and you'll be able to, what do you think? You game for that? You seem like you'd be game for that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, good. So I'll keep you in mind, Connor, next time I'm doing McKinley Buckstops. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda is a presentation about the 2019-20 Pebble Projects. I'll turn this over, meeting over to Dave and John for this report.
Dave's ignoring you, I think.
Yeah, that's okay. Dave, I'll give my little spiel, and then you can chime in if you feel necessary. So we did something similar to this last year a little bit, and I think this is probably the fifth year, since it's the fifth year of the Pebble Promise of approving the projects for the upcoming year. So last year, that kind of transformed a little bit due to the facility master plan and the potential of new elementary schools, that we decided to defer some projects, so we weren't spending money on schools that might only be here for five years somewhere in that region, and kind of the unknown of when some of those schools may close. So this year, we did the same type thing, so I think in all of your board packets, there's a listing of the Year 5 Pebble Promise. So there's three, four different sections in there, so I'll kind of just step through it section by section. The first section you see, which is the entire front page and about the top quarter of the second page, those are Year 5 projects that were listed in the original Pebble Promise. Those we're proposing to move forward with, with no change there. The second portion, which if you guys have colored copies, it's the portion in red, those are the those are the projects that we're asking to defer until we have more information on the facility master plan. So you'll see, I believe every one of those is from a building that will either be rebuilt or repurposed, so the current building as it stands now potentially would not be there. So this is where it gets a little different from last year. So those first two steps we did last year, we looked at Year Four PEPAL, we said we want to move forward with these, we wanted to defer these. So this year, what we're proposing is instead of just deferring projects, that we're taking another group of projects from the PEPAL promise in the future, so all these projects are defined in the PEPAL promise, but they're just from Year Six or later. We're proposing that we move those forward. For a couple of reasons for that. First reason being is obviously we know that the need's there, and even more need than what we have dollars. The second reason for that is if SAVE does not pass and we're not able to move forward with our PEPAL plan, we will now have two years of projects that we will have to pull back from deferment and move forward. And what my concern is there is that we're going to overload a lot of our contractors with, instead of having, let's say, two or three tuck pointing projects a year, now all of a sudden I'll have six, seven, eight, somewhere in that region, so that I'll be overloading contractors. And one, either they won't be able to do the work, or two, that that work will get more expensive from what I'm at. So I'm trying to offset that with project for project. So like, as you see, just a quick example, I'm deferring $45,000 worth of dry erase boards, I'm pulling ahead $45,000 worth of dry erase boards, and that stays consistent on down through. So I'm trying to replace as close as I can, dollar for dollar. The fourth section there is a typical section that we've had in the last couple of years as well, what are just non-PEPAL promise projects, but are projects that we've had every year. And then there's also a few extras there that we have pulled forward due to need. So that's kind of the short summary. Dave, if you have any comments?
The only thing I would add to it is, you know, when you're looking at PEPAL and projects, what to do, what not to do, and it's very difficult because of the unknown with the SAVE and when things will come into play. If it's something that's on the tail end, like for a facility that you want to, you don't know what's on the tail end. So some of those projects, if you had a Cristobal and knew exactly, you know, that building, some of the projects we deferred, might be saying, yeah, we can do those now because we're going to get, you know, 10 years of life out of it, it's worth doing, you know. But it's the unknown right now, which makes it challenging and looking at that. But when John said we deferred it, those dollars are still available to do projects in the future, and we just, they're still there. But if we don't end up doing that, we have other dollars available for other things if those dollars don't end up being spent. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Yeah, I agree, and Dave does make a good point there. Just because we defer it now, that doesn't mean that we can't do it later in time. So that's very important, so people, so some buildings don't feel like they're losing out. If you guys don't do concrete now, you're not going to be able to do it. No, we will be able to do it if that point in time comes that the need is there.
So are we communicating this schedule with the individual schools involved?
Yeah, so once it gets board approved, and probably when it gets closer to summer, when these projects become a reality and I have a more defined scope of exactly what we're doing, then we do send out this to all of the building administrators, so they know exactly what's going on in their building.
And I hope they would share that with parents, since it was our taxpayers that voted to approve PEPAL. And then the other, I think it's important for our board in the future to talk about the eventuality of SAVE not passing in this next legislative session, and maybe perhaps talking about bonding for this, for some of this work. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, and Dr. Buck, maybe get that on your, your agenda.
Yeah, so the November board meeting, yeah, thanks, Director Meisterling. The November board meeting, we're going to cycle back to the conversation about the facility master plan. This last spring, we put five sort of concepts in front of the board just to get thinking about what, you know, where we'd be depending on if SAVE happens or doesn't happen. And as part of that, I've reached out to, there's Dave, I've reached out to Dave, and starting to talk about what would bonding numbers look like, what would that mean for tax rates and some of those kind of things, and hopefully we'll have that together, or we intend to have it together for the November board meeting, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Because it's a real conversation that probably needs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you have here too, in the red, the ones that have been deferred and that are some of the schools that possibly will be closing.
Correct, yeah.
So we're holding off, but if something would need repair, we would repair that, correct?
Correct, correct. And I should have mentioned in that, that we went through and looked at those projects. So you would see, for example, like Hirsken Concrete, that one's deferred. But if you go back to the projects we're moving forward with, we are moving forward with the concrete at Grant Wood because of need. So anything that's safety-related, we're moving forward with, and you can throw concrete and asphalt work into that. Slips, trips, falls, as Linda would know, is the biggest work comp claim that we have. So anything that we can do to help that, we are still moving forward with. Even if it's, you know, only for maybe five or six, seven years, we are still moving forward with those types of projects.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We will now vote on the 2019-20-20 PEPAL projects provided in our agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Thank you, and thank you. Next on our agenda is a discussion item regarding our board goals. Jennifer has provided some possible amendments for our consideration. And Jennifer, would you please provide us with a rationale for the amendments?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for that, President Humblets. In our, in our board goals, we, the board goals begin by saying that we will provide governance that is reflective of the action plans, the strategic goal action plans that are listed in the district strategic goal action plans. There are three items that are specifically, there's one item that's specifically mentioned, which is facilities, future-ready facilities, and there are two items that are included in the narrative, which are future-ready workplace and future-ready learning. Omitted are future-ready diversity and inclusivity and future-ready story. As a board, I feel that we have taken actions that support those two items as well, and the more intentional we can be in focusing our work and tying it back to our, to the district goals, that it will be more reflective of our work as a board. So I included items to be reflective of both future-ready story and future-ready diversity-inclusivity.
Is there any discussion from the board?
I do have a comment. I'm looking at the last one for advocating for public education, and I'm wondering if the proposed.
Exactly where are you, Mary, so I can make sure that.
I'm on the very last page.
Okay.
Item number seven.
Okay.
And so, is that a little too prescriptive? I mean, I think that maybe that's an activity that may result from the ABC, but there may be other activities that may result from it as well. And so it not, it shouldn't be held to just sharing district and student success stories, information, et cetera. Because it may include other things that still demonstrate that work, but are just not quite as prescriptive.
So would you prefer it to be reworded to say something like demonstrate or share items that are reflective of the future-ready story of our district?
I might suggest it not, it not need an edit at all, that the ABC is a living, those are living words and statements that all kinds of things can come from that to demonstrate that work. I'd be interested in other people's thoughts.
I think, Mary, I would agree. I mean, the less prescriptive or prescriptive and specific we could be, probably the better. I mean, we don't want to close down anything, we want to leave things open to allow for the creativity to decide how we're going to share that or how we're going to accomplish that.
I agree with that, too.
I do like the addition of, while I, while I agree, being prescriptive, the more that you spell out exactly, it's going to make it more challenging. But I like the use of the word innovative practices, and I'm wondering if in that item seven, bullet C, to ensure high-quality, innovative, and equitable student learning opportunities? To, because I do like that addition. I think that it, that, that is something that we are striving on doing active, actively working to be more innovative in the way that we're approaching education and making sure every student is future-ready. So I think that addition is, is definitely called for.
So, I'm sorry, can you more clearly define how you would reword that?
I would say high-quality comma, innovative practices, and equitable.
Student learning.
And equitable student learning. I would add the innovative practice in, because we're looking at high-quality, we're looking at innovative, and we're looking at equitable.
Yep, I don't have a problem with that.
You see that, Noreen? I see the this going on, and I'm.
Noreen, do you have comments?
She may be looking at 4A. Because if you look at 4A, 4A says support innovative learning practices.
Right, right.
So they're split out there.
Yeah, good point.
Yep, very good point.
So I, I mean, I, it's whether or not we want to include it a second time. It's, I don't think it's inappropriate to put it there as well, but.
So you're saying add the wording on that seven?
Seven C.
Ensure high-quality, innovative, and equitable student learning opportunities?
Innovative practices, I think, is what they said.
Because we're talking.
With that?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And then I'm looking at, we had the three, flipping back and forth. On the subs, she wanted, Jennifer suggested on that section E encourages development, I'm sorry, three. Do, do we want to add that to the document?
Adding an E?
Yes, adding an E to number three, and also to number four.
Tell me what that, how, how would you evaluate a system that assures that, the rest of that? How was?
For student voice.
Yep.
And student equity to resources, opportunities, and expectations. These words are repeated from the action plan. I just think that we, it helps us to be intentional in our focus that we are going to be promoting issues of equity in student learning and in hiring. As we've already, well, this is about student learning, but I think that it, I, I'm not sure what that system looks like, that's management, right? So, so maybe, maybe.
Say, I didn't hear that.
Maybe, maybe it is, I'm, I'm starting with four, and I'm sorry to go backwards and work up, but maybe it is fostering an environment that considers these things. I'm, I'm just looking at the language that is in the previous statements and seeing what kind of action are we, can we monitor? Because supporting innovative, expecting a continuation, supporting, supporting. Is there something like, is there something that we can say, instead of necessitates considerations, we can say.
Foster.
Fosters an environment where diversity, inclusion, and are integral aspects to the hiring process.
Okay, are we talking about?
So are we talking about student learning, we're talking about, but now you're talking hiring practice?
I'm on four, I'm, I'm looking at your four. I'm going backwards, I'm sorry, just because that's where my screen was.
Right.
Because if we're fostering, because that one's talking about the hiring process. So if we're fostering, or, I don't like the word fostering, but I can't come up with anything else better right now, but I think that there needs to be something there, Linda, maybe about how, how we are very much paying attention to that, and that has become, that has become something.
Maybe prioritizing.
We have that five-year, we have that five-year graduated program that we just considered, so.
Right.
You know, that has been something that has been discussed, and I, and I think if we can come up with the right statement, right way to phrase that, it would fit well in there.
Prioritizes, I think, is nice.
So we're suggesting on four, on that F, to change the wording for fosters, we want to make sure we get the diversity and inclusivity to be integral aspects of the hiring process. That's what we'd like. Am I, is the board in agreement with that?
So prioritizes considerations of diversity and inclusivity to be integral aspects of the hiring practice, is that?
Or maybe it's just prioritize diversity and inclusivity to be integral aspects of the hiring practices.
The board okay with that?
Yep.
Let's look at three.
And that, you, the system can be, do you want to refer to HRS?
Well, I'm wondering if there can be language about diversity and inclusivity added to B rather than, rather than pulling out another item, support conditions for success and hold, because part of the conditions for success are recognizing and assuring that we are allowing student voices to be heard and providing equity and resources. So isn't that really an expansion of B?
In B, the system is referring to HRS as well?
That's, I'm looking at Rod and Noreen, I'm thinking.
System accountable to reach student learning goals.
I'm thinking if we add those, those key words in there to help it be very clear that we're talking about diversity, inclusivity, equity.
Yep.
And that, that may be enough up in that, in that three B.
So when we talk about who we're supporting, that's our profile of a graduate vision work. And the, what we're doing about it is the strategic plan. And the framework of HRS is that how we're doing it within the schools. So if you wanted that parallel language, it could be support the conditions for a high reliability school framework that, that supports the conditions of holding the system accountable to reach student learning goals, or something like that.
Big, 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 yeah.
And we could include the equity to resources, opportunities, and expectations.
Okay.
So I think that, that's vernacular that we're using, and it's, it would be great to reinforce it in this, in this setting. I, I think that's a great point, Jen.
Did we get everything, so?
Yeah, so can B just go on to say?
Yeah. It's going to get capturing that.
Support conditions for success and hold the system accountable to reach student learning goals by developing a system that assures diversity and inclusivity of student voices and student equity to resources, opportunities, and expectations.
Yep.
But we'll insert high reliability in there.
Yeah.
Right, right. Works for me.
So Laurel, how do we move forward with this, since we've made some changes?
I think we've got those changes captured, and we will just provide a new document for you.
Okay. Thank you. The final item on our agenda is to approve a request for a closed session. This requires a motion and a second. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, October 8th, 2018, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individual reputation, and that the individual requests a closed session as provided in Section 21.51I of the Iowa Code.
There's a second.
Second.
This will be a roll call.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Director Chikov.
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
President Humblets?
Aye. The board will meet in a closed session as followed by the Iowa Code immediately following our board. our board meeting. Before we recess tonight's meeting, please remember to take your notes, and also you have your school calendars that have been provided as part of your agenda. With no further business, we will now move into a closed session, and I want to thank everyone for being here, and have a great evening.